This meeting is called order. We're gonna ask Mr. Armstrong to lead us in prayer, and Mr. Johnson will lead us with the pledge.
Father God, would you please allow your wonderful love, your grace, your wisdom, and your tender mercy to govern our hearts, our minds, and our deeds? May we use our talent and our gift to edify you and to improve the lives of the people we serve. These blessings we ask in thy holy name. Amen.
Amen. Go ahead in unison.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See you.
Good evening, and I wish to welcome you here to our meeting of the Board of Aldermen and Mayor. We're on item number three under announcements. Have a series of events going on. On October the 12th, we will have a steering committee meeting with Ty America at the Bastrop Municipal Center at 2:00. I urge you to attend. This is going to be a very big meeting and step towards our future. The invitations have gone out. We have it televised on Channel 7, and we have planned for this event. Secretary Morey will be in attendance with us, so I urge you to please come for this meeting on October the 12th. October 13th, we have a series of meetings with the planning and zoning stakeholders at the Bastrop Municipal Center from 8:30 to 10:00, the education, economic development, and small business. From 10:30 to 12:00, housing, neighborhoods. From 1:30 to 3:00, the public realm, parks, and recreation utilities and safety. From 3:30 to 5:00, downtown and cultural arts. From 7:00 to 8:30 is the community-wide meeting. October the 17th, we have our Cotton Festival Parade to begin at 10:00 that morning, so watch the newspaper for the parade route. And on, from October 21st through the 25th is our annual Cotton Festival Fair. On October 30th, we have Which Way is Main Street from 2:00 to 4:00, and I'm sure Mark will have some more information about that. Please don't ask me to dress up in a costume. I have to be at work all day that day, and I don't want to frighten any of the citizens away. That concludes my announcement. Do we have any from the council members? Okay. Okay. At this time, Ms. Goldman, let's do a roll call to determine a quorum.
Mr. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Present.
I'm present, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Item number four. At this time, I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from September 10, 2009, regular council meeting.
So moved there.
Certainly. Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five. Finance Committee report, Resolution 091303, bills and claims for the month of September. Mr. Armstrong?
Let me make a motion that we adopt Resolution 091303. Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six. Mr. Rainwater is unable to be here, but we have Vicki Carpenter, who's going to give us a presentation on the Keep More House Beautiful. Thank you for the briefing the other day. This information is to aid council members in expediting efforts in your individual districts for maintaining your areas. Go ahead, Ms. Carpenter.
Good afternoon, everybody, or good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for everything you've done to help us already. Keep More House Beautiful and the City of Bastrop created a partnership together several years ago, and our main focus is to continue that partnership and make progress and see even more results. And speaking of results, these were at, the landscaping in the front of City Hall was part of a partnership with City of, the City of Bastrop. Keep More House Beautiful partnered with the Boy Scouts, as well as International Paper, who helped fund it. But I think you'll, I think our main goal in it was for it to thrive on the glit. And I think not only does it do that, but I think it's very pretty. I hope y'all enjoy the fountain and the great merrows. And we'll move on if I can make this thing do. I want to, like I said, I wanted to thank you, but also I want to apologize that Mark's not here. He was scheduled to be here, but at a last minute, he had to cancel, so you'll have to put up with me. We're gonna look at Bastrop environmentally, at some befores and afters, our history, our I may be dating myself on this one, but this next slide is out on 165. There was an old nightclub that was very popular in 1950s, 1960s, that sat out there for a long, long time. And Jerry John, I mean Jerry Johnson is here, and he may can correct me on this, but since this was outside of the city limits, the police jury helped us with this, and they contacted the Moncom family and asked them if they could help us by tearing down that building, and they did. If you'll look, this is the before, and this is what it looks like now. And this, as you will know, as you well know, this is on one of our main corridors, so we're making our first impression with our visitors coming in 165, so we want this to look especially nice. This is on West Madison, and I think it remained there for quite a while. If you look on the right, there was an old house that burned, and ironically, it had several junk vehicles that were parked around it that made it even that much worse. But with a little help from the city, look what happened. And I think International Paper gave them some money to help as well with the demolition. This is across from the post office. I don't know if y'all remember this. It's right across from the post office and across from the visitor's center. If you'll look on the right, that's what it looked like for a while. They started the demolition process, and they just left it that way for quite a while. And then one day, I rode by, and it was cleaned up, and we're using it now. I think it belongs to the Stevenson process, but their Stevenson family, but I think they let us park on it sometimes. I tried to select slides that were from all over town, that we've got many, many slides or pictures of befores and afters, but to give a overall picture, that's, that's what I wanted to do. So this is across from the council on aging. Many of you may remember this old house. I remember the family that used to live there when I was a child. That's what it looked like before, and that's what it looked like after. The City of Bastrop played a big part in this one, too. I think Eric Montgomery, is he here? Yes. He helped with this. This, again, the City of Bastrop helped us with this. This is, was out on 165 or West Madison, y'all may remember. It was old garage right there across from the middle school or the junior high. Do most of you remember it? But if you look at the before and you look at the after, that's altogether different. And again, it's right there coming into town. This is out on the Marouge Road. On the right, you'll see an old filling station that used to belong to Bob Johnson. And he was kind enough to take it down without any too much nudging. We nudged him a little bit, but you'll see the before and after, and here's his office. And I guess it's my fault, the sign is kind of blurred, but the police jury, they were kind enough, I asked them if they could do something about their sign, and they did it. And this, I want most people to, our people to realize, a lot of times, all it takes is somebody asking. And with, you have to ask them with the right attitude, though. But I think it is a major improvement. And this is where we are right now. We have made many milestones, and we went too fast. If you want to, it might help. There we go. When Main Street, Bastrop was first designated as a Main Street community, many of the officials and dignitaries from Main Street came up here and looked at Bastrop, and one of the things they identified as one of our weakest areas was the litter. And we're very proud to say, we went from being very, I mean, having a, being criticized for having a lot of litter to winning the runner-up in 19, 2006 for the Cleanest City Contest. Most of you know that the Cleanest City Contest is sponsored through the Louisiana Garden Club Association, through Clarklea Garden Club, and I think that one of the representative, Peggy, I mean, Pat is here with us, from Clarklea Garden Club. But we went from being the runner-up to winning it statewide in 2007, and then in 2007, we were certified as being a Keep America Beautiful affiliate, and in 2008, we won it. And in 2008, the jury created what we call the Morehouse Parish Litter Court, and Robert W.'s here, and he's been a big help with that. In 2009, our Keep More House Beautiful decided to restructure because we felt as if our name was Keep More House Beautiful, not keep a designated route beautiful, and that's what we were doing with the Cleanest City Contest. It's gonna take a lot of learning from everybody to learn what we need to do, so it's gonna take a little time, but we feel like we'll get better results. These are our partners, and we're very proud of, and especially the school system, who we've helped a whole lot. I think we've given them around $60,000 from Keep Louisiana Beautiful grants. The police jury's helped us, the Highway Department, the Sheriff's Department, Mike Tubbs is here. He was very instrumental and helped us get a new grant that just became effective October the 1st. The inmates are used to pick up litter throughout the parish, and the state helps fund that. Of course, the City of Bastrop, the LA DOTD, and the DEQ have worked, DEQ was really helpful during the cleanup with the tires. They couldn't have been any nicer. And of course, the Chamber of Commerce gives us, gives us an office, the Tourism Commission has helped us, Energy Waste Management, International Paper, Walmart, Vanish Healthcare, everybody has really been nice to us. Alpha Kappa Alpha has been great to help us pick up litter, the Beta Club through Bastrop High, Boy Scouts, the 4-H Clubs, Main Street, and many more. And I hope I haven't left too many people out. Our future, we want to focus on a lot of the signs and dilapidated housing and buildings throughout the city as well as the parish. And to do that, we want to help you. We want to meet you at least halfway. So what we've done is people that work with Keep More House Beautiful have volunteered to work with each of the city aldermen. District A, that's Marvin. Mark will be working with you. District B, that's Obie, and Kevin and Lisa Chain, Kevin's here, I mean, excuse me, Lisa's here. District C, Mark Rainwater will be working with you, Sonny. District D, I'll be working with you, Roy, as you well know. And of course, District E, Glenn and Boo Robinson will be working with District E. They had to go to the ballgame, so they didn't make it here tonight, but they are there for you, to help, you know, to help you. And we want to work with litter awareness and education, continue to work with education, because I think that's key to it, people realizing how important it is to respect our environment. God gave us this beautiful world, and we need to take care of it. Economic development and beautification or environmental respect go hand in hand. You can't have one without the other. Businesses always come to town looking, and the first thing they see is how well your community is maintained. If it's not maintained well, if it doesn't show that you have respect for your environment, that indicates to them that your values aren't where they want to be, where they should be. We would like very, other things that we would like would be a revised city litter ordinance. The city has a ordinance now for litter, and it has done a beautiful job. However, we think, as we understand it, if the city ordinance mirrors the parish ordinance, that will help both parties, not only the parish, but the city in that, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, the constables can write litter tickets or cite people for littering within the city of, city limits. Right now, they cannot. So that would save manpower as far as the city's concerned, as well as give the constables a little bit more spending money, because they sometimes, when they write or cite individuals for littering or dumping or something of that sort, they get a little extra spending money. Am I correct, Robert?
Oh, Ms. Carpenter, that's something that we, we get our attorney to investigate, to make sure that we do not cross any boundaries, that we're not supposed to. I do know that Mr. Lawrence has indicated in the past that we need to use ordinances that we have on the books creatively to our advantage, but we will get Mr. Lawrence to look at that.
I hope, I hope he'll understand what we're trying to do, not only help y'all, but help the parish and the city.
I, I do understand, but I'd like to know that we're doing things in a proper order to make sure we do not cross any boundaries.
We respect that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
Also, it's a landscaping ordinance. It would be for future development, property development, where it would encourage more green space, trees and that type of stuff. I think they always enhance any property, trees and the green space that you have, rather than having all concrete. If you'll look at any of the newer developments, they always, the nicer ones, they usually have trees and landscaping. This is the grant that I was telling you about a few minutes ago, the LA DOTD Project Cleanup Grant. It's new, it came effective October the 1st, the one that Mike has overseen, Mike Tubbs. Right now, we'd like to make a presentation of something we've worked really hard on, and we feel like it's gonna be a tool that'll help you, and we want you to know how much we appreciate you, and we want to work with you. And these binders, we feel like they can be a tool for you and maybe save you a lot of time, and save us all a lot of time. What we've done is we've ridden all over the community, all over the City of Bastrop, and looked at the, each district, and we've listed areas that need improvements environmentally, whether it be a junk car, or a dilapidated building, or simply a city sign that, or sometimes some of the city's street signs are just, well, it's just a pole sticking in the air with no signs. And those are simple things that can be fixed, but we want to stress that we want to work with you, we want to help you, and if this can help you in any way, it's been well worth the time, and it's taken a lot of time. This is an example of one of the pages. This is from District B, which Obie had been so kind to give me some addresses to look at, so I did. And I made some pictures, and not only do we give the location, we give the 9/11 address, we give a picture, and then as well, we give the ordinance that it's in fraction of. I think it can be a very useful tool. Thank you, Obie. And in closing, we wanted to ask you to please clean, help us clean up our city. We don't want to put the total responsibility on you. We want you to know we're here to help you, but we need, there are lots of areas we need to focus on, and I think we need to focus not only on our corridors, which that's important, but we need to go out in the community, out in the districts, like the area that Obie gave me, that was on, some of it was on Daisy Street and Ludlum. And those aren't necessarily our main corridors, but those are important areas of the community. And thank you again. That's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I, I looked at an audience, and I see your partners, I see school board members, I see, I share, would you introduce them, please? The partners.
I'll try. Let me see. We've got Doug Hickembottom down here on the end, who's always interested in the community. He calls me often. And then, of course, Mark, he's on our Keep More House Beautiful Board. And then Ruby Hamilton, and then Lisa Chain, and Glennis Lewis, and then, yeah, there's Jonathan W., and Cindy, I'm sorry, Jonathan Hendricks, and Cindy Hendricks, and then Jerry Johnson and Charlene, and there's Pat Peppers, and then, let's see, who else we've got here from Keep More House Beautiful? Okay, there's Brother Jim Ingram that came, and Eddie Gordon's here, and Cal Adams is here. I'm a little short, so I can't see everybody. But anyway, if I've missed somebody, I'm sorry. And Robert W.'s here from the, he's a JP for the jury. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. We know that you work extremely hard, and certainly, I know the council members appreciate your efforts as we work to move the city forward. Thank you for identifying those areas.
I enjoy it. If we can make any progress together, it makes it all worth it.
Okay. I'll see you Monday. Item number seven. Mr. Pruitt, our Washington DC consultant. Thank you so much for joining us. We have another presentation from Mr. Pruitt. He's gonna give us an update on, on the money situation in Washington DC.
There is none. How's that? Madam Mayor and Council, let me thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this evening. I've done this before and with previous councils, and I think the, the number one thing I can come away from this presentation with you this evening with is that you'll be able to take some of the things that you've heard about, read about, dreamed about, and put them in reality in, in terms of the knowledge that you hopefully will gain from this presentation, and then what we're trying to do and have been working on the city's behalf in Washington on, and hope to continue our successful efforts going forward. This presentation tonight will focus fundamentally on four areas. The federal funding agenda that has been developed, and we've been working for some time for the City of Bastrop. I want to spend a little bit of time and talk about something that in my research I found hasn't really been discussed a lot here in Bastrop, and that's the whole federal stimulus package. And I'm sure you're asking, where's my stimulus, like many other communities, so we need to maybe educate you a little bit so we can be a little more aggressive about going after the funds that are available. Talk to you about the status of our current, what we call fiscal year 2010 efforts and where the federal appropriations are today. And then also talk to you a little bit about some opportunities that are ahead that we want to work closely with you on in pursuing funding and opportunities for the City of Bastrop. So let me first talk about the federal funding agenda. What you see in front of you comes about fundamentally through a process of consultation with the mayor and various city departments, and we began this process back in 2004 and have developed for you a listing of key projects that we've been working on and pursuing, and we've had some success, as you can see, in the funding attained column on this chart over the years in, in getting some of these projects funded. And as you'll note, the second line there, the, one of the projects that Mayor Hawkins in the previous administration wanted to mount was to expand the MET lab enforcement activities in this area. And I know as a resident of Greenville, Mississippi, where I live, even though I work in Washington DC, this area is not too dissimilar from that, and the, the growth of MET production and MET labs in this area has been a major problem because of essentially the law enforcement's community's inability to go after those, those sites, do the cleanup, do the enforcement activities. We are going to be receiving $650,000 in this year's appropriations towards the, the first funding of that. We also have already received $1.645 million that has been placed primarily in police equipment to enhance the enforcement activities of the Bastrop Police Department. So this is a major building block effort that, that gets us moving in the right direction on that project. We've received funding in the past for the airport. We're, we're trying again to continue that effort and hope in the next phase of stimulus funding that we'll be able to receive some funding for that effort. As I noted, the police technology, which is, the police department has computers and vests and other things that, that they've been looking to. We are working now on about a little over half a million dollars' worth of funding that we received for water and sewer construction. And I don't want to go into too much detail about that, but that is probably the hardest brick and mortar area that any city confronts, because the, the terrain is always shifting, always moving. The Multi-Purpose Technology Center is a project that we mounted where we hope to, again, access some funding to build upon what has been already invested in the ditto building here in Bastrop. You probably don't know it as the Multi-Purpose Technology Center, you know it as the ditto building, but that is what that project speaks to. We have, over the years, gotten funding for street repairs, and I want to talk a little bit more about that when we talk about stimulus. But that continues to be an area where the City of Bastrop not only has a need, but also the ability to, to, to get further access to funding. A new area which I think is really growing in importance and is going to grow in importance, in fact, I saw an article in the newspaper in the last day or so about the levee situation here. Bastrop very desperately needs to update your flood maps. The primary reason for doing that is that that is what the insurance companies will use to rate flood insurance for this area. And those maps are about 25 years old, and I don't know how you feel about it, but I wouldn't want someone assessing insurance rates on my property based on 25-year-old maps, because it's gonna show things on that map that haven't been dealt with as part of the other water and sewer activities that you've, you've done, and it will cause those rates to go through the sky, through the sky. And you will be here facing roomful of very angry citizens because those maps have not been modernized. So that's, that's an area that is gonna grow in, in priority for the city, and certainly one of the things that we will now have more than sufficient justification, where we thought it was a great idea before, now there's a real need. The last two items, the Morehouse, the Bastrop Morehouse Reservoir is a project that fundamentally talks about water supply for the city in the year's future. And then the Bastrop Center City Street Improvements Program, as you well know, and I don't need to tell you, downtown Bastrop street traffic remains a major issue, and doing some improvements there that we can get put into the 2009, now 2010 highway bill that's coming down the pike are, are gonna be critical efforts for us. Let's talk a little bit about the stimulus program, and I think it's important to help you understand, there, there've been a lot of big numbers thrown around about the stimulus package, $787 billion. Sounds like a lot of money, but there are a number of parts to this program that, when you have a moment to go back through this material, I want you to take a look at how the money actually breaks down in that package. You'll see that there are infrastructure, there's health, education, energy, trade adjustment assistance activities, law enforcement. assistance activities, law enforcement activities. And I would point out here in terms of the law enforcement, I know the city has qualified already for funding that would supplement salary for one officer, but there is another round, as you'll see, going forward here, that is to come in all of these areas. And I would just point out to you that when you think about the stimulus package, it's really a three-year package. Historically, when the US government has done a stimulus, it's been a one-time package, one-size-dollar amount. When it's gone, it's gone. This project and this program actually is a three-year program that changes from year one, where you see that 64, roughly 64% of the spending in the first year's money is going into health programs. Another roughly 18% is going into education. I don't know, and I certainly didn't see anything listed where the schools in the county here or in the city have even reached out to try and get any school modernization money, but that's where tho- those funds are included. Community development, transportation, which is the pink, as you, or, excuse me, the purple, as you will see there, is only 8% of the first year's funding. However, when you look at, by the third year of the funding, it becomes 30% of the program. So year two and three, as far as Louisiana funding is concerned, are gonna be critical. And how we go about approaching the state, who in year one has used those funds essentially to close the loop and tie up loose ends on projects in the south, in the Katrina area, which we've been competing against throughout all of these last several years, that's going to change, that will need to change, and we're gonna have to be much more aggressive and strategic about pursuing funding opportunities there. In Louisiana, in the year, first year, I think it would also be helpful for you to know, this is how the state of Louisiana is spending its money that has been allocated in the first year. School and college modernization has gotten a major allocation there, and that's been construction modernization money. Educational technology, computers, Louisiana obviously was one of those states that was behind the curve in putting computers in schools. This, this funding is now allowing them to play catch-up. Infrastructures, highways and bridges, mass transit, public housing, which you have a good deal of here in Bastrop, has been getting money, but again, in those three areas alone, 80% of the funds has gone to South Louisiana. We need to start working on getting some of that allocated in North Louisiana now. Water projects, here again, the same problem. Energy and environment has gotten, the energy programs there are mostly research-driven programs at the universities. Weatherization, again, that is a construction project, that is a hands-on project, where organizations working with the city or the city itself, although I would encourage you to, to look to organizations, can actually go out and help residents update and weatherize their homes, putting in storm windows, various other weatherization activities. Public safety grants, which have gone to police departments, again, Bastrop has received $14,000, which is to supplement pay for, for at least one officer, I believe. But the state total is roughly 100, $1.2 billion that has come into the state out of the, the first year's funding that has been available. Those numbers will change, but slightly, but the state will continue to receive roughly that same dollar amount in year two and three. This chart kind of shows you, again, an even deeper breakdown in terms of transportation and, and how those funds are being spent, public housing, et cetera. Homeless prevention activities, again, so that you can be aware of where these funds are and how they then fit into the various needs that your constituents are bringing forward for you. There is a good deal of discussion in Washington now about a stimulus two package. I would probably call your attention to the bottom bullet and, and make you aware that Congress is not likely to do much of anything until unemployment reaches 10%, but we're at 9.8 now. There is, right now, an, an unemployment extension bill that is starting to work its way through, through the Congress, that probably won't get concluded until sometime in November, but there are three other pieces of legislation that will serve as vehicles that they will use as we get into November, December, and January, and as, as everybody is projecting, unemployment hits that 10% level, that are gonna provide an opportunity for there to be additional stimulus program funding put in place. Right now, we know that they're gonna do unemployment benefits, they are also looking at tax breaks for businesses and first-time home buyers, and I think it is fair to say that there will be additional infrastructure funding put in place as we go forward, which will give us some additional opportunities. On the appropriations front, Congress is still working on this process. They've only really done one bill that has gone to, of the 12 that they normally do that goes to the president. We are currently operating under what we call in Washington a continuing resolution, which allows the government to continue to operate. But those bills are continuing to work through. We know the one bill that has gone, which is why we know that there's $650,000 in it, is the Commerce State Justice Bill. There are several others where we have earmarks that are pending, so the, the jury's still out on those, but we continue to work on those. I would point out that in, in your recent history, these are some of the, the funding that we have been and I've been involved with, with the city in helping to pursue in Washington. Million dollars for smart growth that has come in to the, the state. $425,000 for services to local area businesses to mitigate the closure of IP. A $500,000 grant from the Department of Labor for trade adjustment assistance, again, for workers related to the Bastrop plan. And I point these things out to point out that not all of my work in Washington just focuses on the federal funding agenda. As we get into various other issues that confront the city where there's federal involvement, I'm there. I'm, I'm ready to, to step forward and help on those efforts. There are, as I noted, two major bills that are coming down, where we will have projects, and I think tomorrow in our meeting with the department heads, we may come up with some additional projects that we wanna pursue. One is a federal highway bill, which technically expired on September 30th, and is now operating under a three-month extension, and then they will come back next year, starting in January, and work on a full bill that will include all of the highway projects, including the downtown traffic center and any others that we may identify. The other is the Water Resources Development Act, which fundamentally is one of the programs where we're going to be able to take advantage of getting some of our larger sewer, water and sewer projects authorized for entitlement funding, and, and that's gonna be a critical move for the city of Bastrop, because instead of us trying to, every year, go get 300,000 or 500,000, we will have authorized projects in place that then we're part of the budget versus trying to get in. And as I know, as you struggle with the city budget, you know the difference between being in the budget and trying to get in the budget, and that's, that's a fight that we now have to, to take on, but we're poised to do so with at least one or two projects that have already been identified, and we hope to identify some more tomorrow. Again, on the infrastructure front, there's broad bipartisan support. We get a lot of support from Rodney Alexander, the local congress member here, on these projects, and he's been very supportive of the city of Bastrop. But there are four sort of primary conditions that folks are looking at. Repair of existing roads and bridges, improving highway safety and increasing capacity, reducing congestion, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions and improving air quality. And I think all of those criteria, which have finally been boiled down for the discussion, play very well and help Bastrop in, in significant ways, so that now, these are issues we really do have projects that we can point to that will be solved by getting into these programs. The last one is the water resources, and again, talk about the water resources being water and sewer-related. That process, again, with, the House has already started. We have several projects that have been put in. The Senate has not yet begun those, so hopefully the projects that we identify tomorrow will be added to that list. Oh, thank you. So we're, we're positioned well. I think we've got some good, good ideas and some good projects that, that we can move forward. We've got justifications, and most importantly, we've got, I, I would say generally, a very supportive congressional delegation to help us with. And with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. I asked him to do a comprehensive presentation tonight, because this is the first time that this council has formally had the opportunity to meet you, and thank you for that, that presentation. It shows how we fit on the national, state, and local level in terms of funding, which is what I asked him to do. He's going to meet with a department head tomorrow along with me, and afterwards, then Mr. Pruitt and I will tailor our request. Thank you for keeping us on the radar. Do you have any questions? He has pledged to come back as often as he needs to. Go ahead, Mr. Thomas.
Question concerning, on the federal infrastructure.
Yes, sir.
The last one at the bottom, it's on November the 8th, 2007, the Water Resources Development Act.
Yes, sir.
2007 was last enacted into law. This law addressed a backlog of projects. My question is concerning our water and sewage.
Mm-hmm.
System on Martin Luther King, is that in that?
That, under federal standards, is a new project. That's a new start project. We, we did not have anything pending in, in the cleanup that was accomplished in 2008. And in fact, at that point, all our requests were individual requests. For example, moving the sewage treatment from, plant from downtown to outside was a standalone request at that time. So this next round is the opportunity, quite frankly, that everybody in the country has been waiting for, for new starts. So the key, as I've, I've noted with the mayor, is for us to get our ducks in order early, so hopefully we can get a low number when they start handing out the tickets and get on the list.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pruitt? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That was a great presentation, very thorough, and look forward to seeing you tomorrow. We'll work on our wish list and make it a reality. Item number eight, Ms. Deborah Thomas, Louisiana Bus Operators Association. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm here to request for our Bus Driver Association. This year, we are having our 70th Annual State Convention, and it's the first time it's going to be in Monroe, and we are co-sponsoring this event with Washington Parish. And what we're doing is trying to find fundraising ideas and ways that we can raise money to, you know, put this event together for the two days. It's going to be November the 20th and the 21st, and as I said, it's going to be in Monroe, and we are helping to plan it, develop it, and it's our first time doing it also, but we are requesting permission to, you know, stand at the lights, to ask for donation, you know, from the drivers, and that was what they was coming to ask me to ask the city. Couldn't we do that?
Okay, I'm gonna ask our city attorney, I know that, that we do have some procedures in place in terms of safety, and we narrowed down the number of people that could actually do that. Ms. Goldman, you might wanna speak to the history of how we've done that and that...
Yeah, in, in the past, we had so many people that was asking to be on the square, and we were getting a lot of complaints that they were children, and we was worried about the liability and the traffic and everything, so the previous administrative set of policy that we would only let two groups be there, and that was the veterans, the poppy day, and then our firemen with MDA drive. Anybody else would have to, you know, come and ask the council for permission to do that, so y'all would just have to control. And what they do is they actually go and talk to the police chief, he will advise them about the rules and the safety, maybe no children, they must wear a safety vest and anything else that, that he sees would be a liability or a problem with the traffic or anything.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the funds that you raised.
The, all the funds that we raised will go towards our Bus Drivers Association and for this annual event only.
In financing the event or to the association for future activities?
No, this, this here particular one would go towards financing this event for November the 20th and the 21st.
Mr. Lawrence, you wanna speak to this?
I know that this issue has come up in the past, not, not only the Bus Drivers Association, but other organizations, and the problem essentially is this, you have so many groups that wanna do this, and as Ms. Goldman indicated, it's been narrowing down to two at this point, and there was some friction even in that process of narrowing it down to two. If you, if you expand that group, I, I can assure you that the city is going to receive additional requests for other groups to appear, and the main problem, from my recollection of it historically, has been safety, and the other part of it is, is citizen complaints about solicitations. So, so those are the, the two problems that have been somewhat debated recently with narrowing this down to, to groups. Well, that said, this body has the power to authorize, you know, this type of activity if you wish. The only thing I'm gonna say is, if you do expect a groundswell of requests from school organizations and other organizations that are trying to raise money, especially if this is now, now we're everybody trying to raise money.
Okay, council, you have, you've heard the request, you've heard the history from our clerk, and you've also heard the liability side of it from our city attorney at this time. If you have any questions, or you wanna give your thoughts, your input, or express how you feel?
I'd like to ask a question. Have you ever tried this before?
This is our first time trying this here with, you know, the lights and everything. But as far as the safety go, you know that that is one of our top priorities, and what we would do is not have everyone and not do all the lights. We only want to do, you know, have certain ones. He said he would pick a group, have certain ones where he have, we would have our vests on, it would have our tag on it, you know, and we would have our badges on. We would stand at certain lights, the women. We would stand at certain lights, the women, and the men would sit over on the side, you know. That would be to, you know, be our protection and everything. So we weren't planning on putting everyone out there. That was his whole point.
Council members, any other thoughts?
Yes, my question would be, how much more are you trying to raise?
Well, we, this is our first time, so, and it's, we're supposed to be doing this whole parish, so we hadn't did like a number scale, but as much as we possibly can. We're trying to get the full Morehouse Parish involved in it. We're not only doing that, we have another group who's going to the businesses and, you know, asking the business not for donations, and this would be, you know, certain businesses can give their, you know, card and certain items and different stuff as donation. We've also gone to churches and asking them for donations and everything also. So it's just like different fundraising program ideas that we are doing.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you doing this in Monroe?
The setting.
The fundraiser at the lights, are you doing it in Monroe?
We are just doing Morehouse Parish. Washington would be doing their own, you know, thing. So we're concentrating on Morehouse Parish to get our fundraising. Monroe, Washington would be, you know, doing it in Monroe, so I don't know what they're doing as their fundraising. Yeah.
Doug, do we have, what about the liability part of that?
To be honest, it's wide open.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Just to lay it out there, and I hate to say that publicly, but that's what got us to where we are now, because there have been problems in the past.
That's my concern, the liability part of it.
Bastrop is my main concern. There's so many possibilities of what could happen if individuals out on a corner of the street, accident could happen. We would be...
Yeah, city would be...
...five of them.
Have all council members expressed their thoughts? Mr. Lawrence, is there something that we require a vote on, or we do a written response, or what is the best way to?
I would say that if it's something that you want to authorize, if you would require, I would advise that you take a vote. That is, if the response is just to take no action, you don't have to do anything, but if it is to do something, someone would need to offer a motion to authorize this group to be able to, you know, to be able to solicit funds in the manner that's suggested.
Okay. Does this council wish to take action on this request?
Not at this moment.
I think we should get what, Mr. Lawrence, and do some more investigation so we know exactly what we're doing without sticking our neck around the chain.
Okay. Ms. Thomas, I commend you for the organization, the seventh of the year, you say?
Yes.
This council has opted to not take an action on your request.
That's fine. Thank you, though, for the opportunity to come and, you know, ask. Thanks.
Good luck. Item number nine, Ms. Joanne Young, request for naming alleyway off West Pine. Mr. Robert Young.
I am not Joanne Young. She sent me, which was her second half, to represent her. I'm open for questions.
Okay. Mr. McKee, you want to come and speak to Mr. and Mrs. Young's request? We appreciate the work you're doing on your businesses over in that area.
Mayor, I'll present. Mr. and Mrs. Young had made a request that we name the alley off of Pine Street. Now, to give you some direction, if we turn it down to one way by the post office and headed west, there'll be two mailboxes on your left-hand side, you can pull up to the mail your mail. Just past that, there's a little alleyway to the left that the garbage trucks used to use to go back up and then pick up garbage behind the businesses. It's about ten foot wide.
They still do.
And the garbage trucks still do. It's about ten foot wide. It doesn't have a name. It doesn't even go all the way to the back of businesses. I'd say fifty yards tops. And their request was that we name it. They even have a name that they had picked out as a request, and I'll let Mr. Young tell you what the name was.
Venetia.
Repeat that again.
Venetia, V-E-N-I-T-I-A.
Venetia.
With a V.
Okay.
With the V?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Is it a public right of way?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Can we name?
It's a name street.
Okay. Are we clear on everything? I know that Mr. McKee has done the research.
If it's a public road, you're certainly free to name it.
Let me get clarification, it's a dedicated right-of-way.
So it's not a street? It's, I mean, you follow the alley, is it, is it where public ingress, ingress or...
Yes, it's for public ingress and ingress.
Okay, well, you can name, I'll see.
All right, as I said, I do express appreciation for the upgrades that Mr. and Mrs. Young have made. In fact, one of their daughters purchased some business downtown and they're just doing renovation. So at this time, if this council wishes to take action on the request, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the naming of the street.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions, discussion?
This will be a motion to authorize the alleyway to be named, using the name that Mr. Thomas has identified.
Mr. Young?
Mr. Young.
Yes, would you spell that again, Mr. Young?
It's in there.
If I'm not mistaken, the paperwork may say V-N-E-T-I-A, but it's that V-N-I-T-I-A.
Okay.
V-N-I.
We'll make that correction.
So that's...
The V, I didn't see the name.
...motion to authorize the company to have that alleyway, that public alleyway, using the name that it's been providing, promised to you.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, sir. Item number ten, Brent Elton, Morehouse Memorial Airport.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Good evening.
Um, not much new going on with the airport right now, except for one thing, we've got our fencing project is underway, and I felt I should let you guys know where we are on it. I know I've gotten a couple of calls from people wanting to know just what is going on out there at the airport. Basically, you know, like I said, our fence project has been started. They've done vast majority of the clearing for the right-of-way of that fence, and they should be completed with that probably this week, the actual clearing. And they've put up a lot of the posts along the western side and some of the northern end of the property, and they've begun stringing some of that fence as well. The problem that we've got right now is that this bad weather is gonna hold us up for, you know, a little while. It's gonna slow things down for sure. But there, when these guys are working, they're working fast and working hard, and they're getting it done. So, so far, I've been pretty impressed with them on that front. No real problems with it at this point. Everything's looking good. If this weather would just hold up, we could get done faster, move along at a quicker pace. Other than that, everything seems to be going okay out there at the airport, no real major issues to report. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you have a project date for the finish of this project?
Yes, I believe it's the end of November should be the completion date. That's assuming that the weather holds out.
Okay, thank you, Elton. Are there any other questions? I'll see you in the morning with our consultant.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, have a good evening. Item number eleven, Mrs. Kay King, Morehouse Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. Always a pleasure to be here. I wasn't here last month, so I really want to kind of catch up a little bit, but our office has been real busy this month with the redevelopment plan and working with Time America, but I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail on that because, as Mayor Olive has already announced, we will be having a meeting on the, on two o'clock Monday afternoon, and we'll be going over some of the things that our offices, that our office has been involved in, in working with Time America, and I think this is a very exciting time for the community. I know everybody kind of wants to know what I've been working on, so I'll give you a couple of things. There's always lots of things that happen during the month, but we did get a request for a company that was looking for a building, and the building fit quite well with the International Paper Building that adjacent to the industrial park, the old liquid packaging plant, and I did submit a proposal on the twenty-ninth to an organization, I don't know always who these companies are, they send me blind information about how much electricity they're gonna use and all of that. So I did put together what I think was a very good proposal, was a very good fit, seventy to a hundred and forty jobs involved in this. It doesn't mean that we always get these, but I just want the public to know that we do get requests all the time and that we're not, you know, we're not just sitting there. Sometimes things look kind of quiet, but, but things are going on in the background that give hope that companies are looking at us and that they're, we have these assets that people find attractive. So, and the other project that I've been working on, and I did finish a rough draft on a lease that I've already talked with Mayor Olive about, that we have a company, a new company called Makin Ridge Foods, that will be making a sweet potato biscuit. They will initially be marketing and doing internet sales and using Bastrop as a base for the sales office, and they have expressed interest in the old thermologic building, and I have been working with this company for several months. We're getting very close. I will be meeting with someone from the FDA. The building out there will have to be approved by the FDA before they can operate that building. I will be bringing the lease to Mayor Olive and for Mr. Lawrence to, to review. Mr. McKee has been very helpful. There were some maintenance items out there in the building, and he has been working with the city maintenance crews. Appreciate all of the support and, and due diligence that the city puts into helping as we bring these along. This will be a startup business. We are gonna treat this kind of as a business incubator, and there are some things within the law that Mr. Lawrence will be able to review that we can do to help startup businesses, primarily because this is a non-competing business. We don't have any other food distribution companies in here, and these people will not be competing with any of our existing businesses, and we have to be very diligent about not doing things that compete against our other businesses and taxpayers in the community. But I think this is very exciting. It's always exciting to, to work with a new company, and I believe that this has a lot of promise, and we're gonna do everything we can to make it successful. I want to go in and tell you a little bit about, on Wednesday, the October twenty-eighth, we will be having our annual membership breakfast. You will be receiving an invitation. We do send out invitations to members and citizens that are interested in the activities that we do. It is free. If there are people in the public that would like to attend, we will be getting some announcements out, and the public is invited to attend. We will just, we will just give out breakfast for as long as we have breakfast, but we would like for people to attend and see a little bit more detail about some of the projects that we have coming up for the current year. Kurt Foreman, the CEO for the New North Louisiana Economic Partnership, will be a guest speaker, and we'll be giving out our annual Parino Award for, to recognize an entrepreneurial business in our community, and this is to promote small business and let people see that we do have small businesses that are active in the community. Many times, people in small businesses are so busy running their business that people in the community don't see these businesses. So we will be presenting at the breakfast some of the biscuits that Makin Ridge Foods is gonna make. It's a unique sweet potato biscuit. It's very good sounding Louisiana product, and we will be presenting that biscuit at our breakfast. So I look forward, it's at six thirty in the morning. We'll start serving breakfast, and we'll have our meeting at seven, eight AM, and that's on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. So please mark your calendars, and we'd love to see you all there. And I don't know, does anyone else have any other questions? We have a lot of projects that are ongoing, but we will be covering some of those in the breakfast, so any other questions?
I have one. You said the old singer service building. What company was interested in that building?
I don't have a name.
Well, you didn't have a name.
I know that it's a company that's not currently located in the United States, I will tell you that. I mean, that was on, on the information that they gave me, but, I mean, I get, I would get requests from site selectors, I get requests from other regional economic development organizations, and I get requests from the state for these, and they come to me as blind, because they don't want, they would don't want people to know what the name of the company is.
I understand. Rena, that's a good location, and you have rail service, also truck service.
Right.
Reason I know, I used to work there.
Great value in that building too. Just a little over eleven dollars a square foot for that building, and that's what companies are looking for when they, that is what companies are looking for right now. Good value in the building.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Ms. King? Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing you on Monday.
Yes.
I take this as an opportunity to recruit everybody to come Monday.
Oh, yeah, because, oh, let me just say this, the theme of our breakfast meeting is at the crossroads, and we are at the crossroads, and Monday's meeting is very important for us to determine where we are going. Which, which road are we gonna take?
Absolutely. Thank you. Item number, item number twelve, we need to appoint another commissioner to the Morehouse Sales Tax Commission, and it is my recommendation that we appoint Amanda Hall. She is our purchasing director. Excuse me. Is Amanda present? Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept...
May I make the motion that we appoint Amanda?
Okay.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions, any discussions? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Amanda. Item number thirteen, discussion action on a bid for industrial park and airport.
Mayor, Boulder Alderman, on October fifth, two thousand and nine, we opened up bids for, hey, let me say that we had three requests that we may have out of some correct, but we only had one bid to turn one back in. The bid on roundbills from Southern Ground Maintenance was two dollars per roundbill and fifty cents per rectangular square bill. With, of course, my recommendation would be that we accept this bid. I will give you some background. The last successful bidder that we had a couple of years ago, and he was more than, there was more than one bidder on this particular bid, bid a dollar... we, there was more than one bidder on this particular bid, bid a dollar thirty cents per round bell. So, it's, the bid is two dollars per round bell. We recommend that you accept the bid.
Ms. Goldman, you want to talk to monetary aspect?
It's income, and we don't have to vote. Okay. It's a good question.
Yes, a dual benefit with this. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation for bid from Mr. McKee.
I make a motion.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we might want to ask Mr. Lawrence, do we also need to get permission for the mayor to enter into a contract for the hay cutting?
Yeah, I mean, I, I took it that that's, that's just...
That was all I was saying.
They can't get the bales unless they cut it.
I'm on my key.
Well, I took it that this might have been a pass, that in other words, the objective here is to, they're gonna, they're gonna purchase the bales from us, which really means they're gonna cut, they're gonna cut it, bail it, and then pay us on that basis. So, the motion then is inclusive of all the acts that need to be performed, I would say, unless there's any objections, so the mayor does have authorization to sign it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McKee, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Item number 14, discussion action on radio communication bids for police department, Chief Black.
Uh, we bid out for, this is part of the technology grant that we're still working on, and we bid out for the Z-tron, Z-tron radio, uh, radios for, this is basically the base station for the police department, for the new radio room. And we only had one bidder, Monroe Communications, of course, we do business with them, um, now, and it was for sixty-nine thousand, nine twenty-eight and fifty-four cents, and I recommend that we accept that bid.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, Ms. Goldman. Do we need any more information in terms of that one bid from Chief Black? All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid. A second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Black. Item number 15, Resolution 091304, resolution requesting funding from the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, Department of Aviation, to complete airport improvements at the Morehouse Memorial Airport. Mr. Elton.
Good evening, again. Uh, basically what this is gonna do, this is gonna outline projects that we want to perform over the next five years. And what we're doing is submitting this to the state, saying, these are the projects that we'd like to have approved and funded over the next five years. And they'll also forward this to the FAA. Uh, they've gotten to where they're on the same page now, and they're using, uh, one form for submission to both agencies. And really, the only thing we have to worry about is this first year. During the course of the next year, if we decide to change the rest of these, we'll have opportunity to do that. But I, I think for the first three years on here, we've got projects, uh, in place that we feel relatively certain that the FAA and the state will approve and fund, and, uh, they're, they're projects that will actually need to have performed. Uh, does anyone have any questions about it?
Any questions for Mr. Elton in terms of this resolution? Is this a five-year plan?
Yes, ma'am, it is a five-year plan, but it's not set in stone. If we wish to change it, we can do so.
Okay, we require action, Mr. Lawrence, on the five-year plan, the resolution?
Yes, ma'am, this is adoption of the resolution, should be sufficient.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on this resolution.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 091304.
Okay.
A second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you, Mr. Elton. Item number 16, Resolution 091305, a resolution requesting the federal government to continue providing federal aid, off-system bridge program, the state of Louisiana Department of Transportation, Mr. Bullock McKee.
Uh, Mayor, earlier this week, I had a meeting with Louisiana Department of Transportation in Monroe, and one of the things that we discussed was, there's a move on in Washington to eliminate the off-system bridge repair program. Now, to give you a little background, this program enables counties and, in our case, parishes in each state to repair bridges with federal money, rather than having to try to raise the money and fund it themselves. To give you an example, it's a fifteen percent, it's actually fifteen percent of the transportation program, the infrastructure program, is set aside each year. For example, for the year 2009, the transportation program was one, was four point three million dollars, of which six hundred and forty-five, approximately six hundred and forty-five million was set aside for the off-system bridge program. Louisiana received about thirty million dollars of that. And to give you an example of how this program works, the White Avenue Bridge was funded by this program. If you went down White Avenue, you, you see that we have a real good bridge. Uh, there's another one in the works for repair, which would be Martin Luther King South. It's, it's on the table and the blueprints being drawn. What they're asking us to do, and what we, what we, I think we might want to do, is draft a resolution and send it to everyone on the House of Representatives Transportation Infrastructure Committee. We have their names and addresses, and whatever your pleasure is.
To give you a little bit more information, you are aware that we're up for inspections on bridges, and, and Mr. McKee and I have talked extensively about the Martin Luther King Bridge, and given a projected year of 2012?
Twenty-twelve, yes, ma'am.
Twenty-twelve. That bridge would stand to gain a major facelift. So, at this time, given everything is sufficient with Mr. Lawrence, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
May I make a motion that we accept the, uh, resolution from Mr. McKee on item number nine, 091305? Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
May I make the motion to adjourn this meeting? A second.